And then we went through this kind of hyperventilation pattern.
Yep.
And that's when the kind of the morphine like feeling hit.
The pain.
Especially those places in my body that have been painful. I don't remember a time when they haven't been in pain, right? It was just like, it was like I was melting into the floor and there was no, like there's usually always, like I'm sitting here on the, on the chair right now and there's this aggravation and there always is, you know? But it wasn't there. It was just like this, like I'd just taken morphine.
Yeah.
Um, and it just flooded my body with this feeling. So my experience, can I share a bit about my experience?
I'd love to hear. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Which, uh, and then if we can do a breathing exercise as well.
Yeah.
Um, to, to show people how it's done and maybe share a bit about how, what they can do.
Yeah.
Now by themselves.
Yep.
Okay, so you, you say this now, it was my mate and Tim and I, and you took us through first of the Wim Hof, kind of standard method that I've seen around where he does these thirty big breaths into the stomach, into the chest. That process, I remember, it was reasonably difficult to start with because also I'd had some protective kind of stuff going on in here because of my history, uh, to try and expand my gut. And I know for people who have issues down there, very active issues down there, that, that is a challenge. Expand the gut.
Yeah.
And I've, I've got scar tissue down there as well, so.
Yeah.
So for me, it was, uh, it was, it was challenging just to expand that area and let it go. But I found that actually that barrier was kind of a more of a mental barrier than it was a physical one.
Interesting. Yep.
And then into the chest, which I've suffered with some, some chest tightness, some anxiety related chest tightness. So that was another challenge for me, just to expand the chest, cause it often feels really heavy.
Mm hmm.
Uh, so that, you know, that was initial barrier to me, but I found if I just kept relaxing and following your, your, um, your prompts, um, really did help me to relax in that. I held my breath then, from then to, you know, a minute or so, and we did that three times, right?
Yes.
And I definitely felt this kind of, I definitely felt that oxytocin.
Um. The breathing get better, easier?
Yes, the breathing got better, cause it felt a bit more cyclical. I just kind of gave into it a bit more. Instead of trying to do it rigidly.
Hmm.
I just gave into it and since been following some of the Wim Hof, um, like the app, there's an app out there which people can, can, you know, to download for free and follow his basic method. And I found that really good and you can time your.
You can time yourself.
Breath holds as well, really easy.
I guess people might be wanting to know now, like, so the purpose of the Wim, there's three points, three principles of the Wim Hof specific method. And breathing's one, mindset's two, and, and cold water immersion is step three.
Okay.
And so breathing, oxygenate yourself. So that's why we take a full breath in and, and it's not like you're breathing out, it's just, you, you're just relaxing. So it's like, it will sound like. And I could keep breathing out like. That's me breathing out, but it's like a full breath in, but I'm just letting it go.
And then relax. Okay.
And it, and it's like, it feels like a half kind of breath out if you wanna look at it like. So the purpose is to highly oxygenate myself.
Hmm.
The more I breathe out, the more carbon dioxide I'm getting pushed out through my body.
Okay.
As well.
I felt the, you know, your, your fingers and your, your body kind of tingling.
Yeah.
Like I assume that's kind of the oxygenation.
Yeah.
Um, happening and it feels, and it feels great. Then after like the second and definitely the third round, after finishing the, the hold of the breath, I felt that kind of euphoric state of like I'd just had a full body massage. It was there, right?
And what was your mind doing by that stage? So this is the second point is mindset. Cause I think you held your breath when I did it, maybe like two minutes, ten?
Yeah.
Two minutes, two, two thirty, two thirty was, yeah.
Was it?
Yeah, so two minutes thirty. What was your mind doing?
In, when I was holding my breath?
Yeah, by the end of it. Where was your mind? Like, were you thinking?
Well, definitely in, uh, you've got this new awareness, this deeper awareness of your body and what's going on.
Yep.
And you're feeling it and you're very, you're very present.
Present. Yeah.
Very present. And then you feel like this need to cut, to breathe kind of surges up. And it's almost like you just sort of tell yourself, well, no, I don't need, I don't need oxygen, right? I don't need oxygen right now. And then it kind of, it comes in a wave and then it kind of dies off again. And suddenly you feel like you've just taken a breath.
Yeah.
But you haven't. I don't know if you get that.
Well, you, you, that's the mind. Yeah, what's your mind doing? It's.
Yeah.
Cause you, sometimes you get into that clear state, but you will have like a voice or something like, is it time to breathe? Cause your, your brain and your body, you know, if you can align them and get them connected, awesome. But a lot of people, what they're telling themselves and what they're feeling are two different things.
Yeah.
And.
Okay.
So it's like a disconnect.
So should you fight that or should you just go with it? Should you just go, well, if I need to take a breath now?
You, well, it's, it's about comfort. So don't, yeah, you, you're not trying to hold your breath like record. Some people do. You can pass out. Um, as I mentioned, the actual goal is to oxygenate yourself. So the first breath hold, say, I think you did a minute, second breath hold, minute thirty, third breath hold, you're getting to two minutes thirty.
Hmm.
Now someone, if I keep going, well, I'll hold my breath for two minutes, uh, ten minutes? No, not without training. So you hit your limit, like two and a half might be your limit, but then the more you do it, then you, you said you did three minutes and something.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, the most I've done is four minutes twenty.
Wow.
And I can't do that on my own. I need someone to guide me. Um, cause your mind does jump in there and go, do I need to breathe? Have I breath? What's going on? Have a look at the time. It's better to be in a good state.
Hmm.
But yeah, you don't wanna fight it and because we're getting to your own, um, inner nature. Like, I, I'm pretty sure, yeah, Wim Hof calls it be the alchemist of your own body.
Hmm.
Like train yourself to put yourself in the state of optimal health just through breathing.
Okay.
And oxygen. That's why you have the water at the start.
Hmm.
But, you know, I would jump in there and say, well, if you don't change the mind.
Hmm.
You're gonna have to become very reliant on this one practice.
Yeah.
And then once, as the human being doesn't see any more progression, you get over it. You're like, oh, it's only taken me so far. So.
Yep.
Learn to, to shift the internal dialogue from the, the mind. And that's where I, I believe for even you, chronic, chronic illness is a state of the mind. Um, cancer is a state of the mind. And, you know, eh, I'm reminded that those diseases, you know, are you scared of getting a flu or COVID? That's a thought. If someone asks me, am I scared of it? No, I'd be excited for it. My body's strong.
Right.
I believe that my body has the capability, and I've had people argue me on, on.
Yeah.
Before going, so what, you, you know, if, what, what if, what if, what if you got it and you ended up in hos- this is what a friend said. What if you got it and you ended up in hospital and I had to tell your son that you're on an, uh, in, in insulator and you're gonna die? Well, that would suck.
Hmm.
Is the reason, but I don't believe that would ever happen.
Right.
I believe if I got it, I wouldn't feel it. I'd be the asymptomatic person.
Okay.
That's what I believe. Yeah, but what if? Well, I don't ask myself that what if question.
Right.
What if I walk out on the street and a bus hits me? Well, that sucks.
Right.
Right? What's the point in thinking of that?
Right. Exactly. Exactly.
I, I, I have trained my mind now, especially since what I went through. That, my mind is way more powerful than any disease.
Hmm.
And I don't say that in an arrogant manner, like I just think if I'm gonna get sick, I wanna have the right mindset to fight it. And the right mindset to fight is I am going to win.
Hmm.
I have everything I need. I didn't need anything.
Yeah. Wow. And what keeps coming back is this kind of phrase for me and my, and listening to you is that your, your reality is basically where your attention, what you place your attention, right?
Yeah, that reticular activator system.
Gratitude. And now what?
What's what you focus on? Um, if you can get your mind in a state of belief.
Hmm.
And that's what we work with. How do you get that state? Well, there is a system you can follow and that's probably for, you could spend hours on that one.
Yeah. Yeah.
Um, but if you can get your, once you get to that state of belief.
Yep.
I have everything I need to win. Then you show up different. Does that mean you're gonna win every time? No, like sometimes you lose, but you learn from them as well. If it's to do with like, you know, when someone says, well, what about if you got sick or cancer? Well, if I lost, I'll tell you what, I'll have a solid crack. Like, I'm gonna turn up with the belief that I'm winning.
Mm hmm.
And I think once you get there, people with terminal cancer that are, we've worked with. I've seen the ones that haven't won.
Hmm.
And I've seen the ones that have won. And the single difference is the way that they showed up. The way they thought, the way that they, you know, operated.
Yeah. Yeah.
And I think, well, if they can do it, anyone can do it. They're human. We, we all, from a biological point of view, we are identical. You've got a heart, you've got a digestive system, you've got two arms, two legs, thank God, brain, two eyes.
Wow.
You produce endorphins, dopamine, serotonin, oxytocin, maybe at different levels, maybe I get more of it, cause I've conditioned myself to do it.
Hmm.
Um, if you don't use it, you lose it. We know that. If you don't use your muscles, you lose it. So sometimes you, you, you might be starting the race two hundred meters behind an able person, but does that mean you can't be more fulfilled and more successful? No.
Hmm.
In fact, you already got it. You've already got it with you.
Yeah.
It's just tap into it.
The other thing I wanted to talk about with my experience was this whole level of, there was another breathing pattern called, that you called the controlled hyperventilation.
Yes.
Which I haven't seen a lot of, but that's the one where.
I can't remember if I learnt that at Wim Hof, to be honest, cause I've studied like so many different breathing techniques. So I do, we do apply our own syntax sometimes, depending on who, who would, who's in front of us.
Hmm.
Um, for you, it was about pain management.
Hmm.
And so, um.
Well, that one.
Yeah, that's, that's crazy.
That, that's, that's amazing. We did that afterward.
Hmm.
Um, and we're obviously after doing the Wim Hof method, it was in a state of kind of high oxygenation.
Hmm.
And then we went through this kind of hyperventilation pattern.
Yep.
And, um, that's when the kind of the morphine like feeling hit.
The pain.
Especially those.
Yeah.
Places in my body that have been painful. I don't remember a time when they haven't been in pain, right? It was just like, it was like I was melting into the floor and there was no, like there's usually always, like I'm sitting here on the, on the chair right now and there's this aggravation and there always is, you know? But it would, it wasn't there. It was just like this, like I'd just taken morphine.
Yeah.
Um, and it just flooded my body with this feeling.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
There was this another state of when you release that breath hold, you know, you talked about holding in after the twenty breaths of, um, hyperventilation and then.
That is a Wim Hof.
And then you hold it and, uh, intense all your muscles and you sort of think about somebody you love, your kids or whatever.
Yeah.
And then let it go. And then that's when it gets trippy. Right? It's like, whoa, I, I get this feeling like I was like somehow plugging out of the matrix. And, and it was all sudden like, okay, I'm sort of just outside, out of body kind of experience.
Hmm.
Which is nuts from just breathing.
Yeah.
And I've since done it a few times and got the same effect. Probably not.
Yeah, when people guide you, it's more intense.
It is, it is. When you did it, when you did it, it was like.
Yeah.
Yeah, I've gone to some other, other place.
Yeah.
And then I'm back in it, but it, and then after that, so the few hours following that is all of what you've been talking about, like that just state of in the flow of the present moment, no mind, the anxiety's gone, I'm really myself, I feel creative from this point.
Yes.
I feel like there's possibility.
Yep.
Uh, instead of seeing all of, in constantly being filled by all of the negative, the blockages, the barriers, the, the challenges, stresses in life, I wasn't in that state. I was in this state of like.
Hmm, that's beautiful. Um, it, it, it's fascinating how, cause the, the picture's something in your mind. That's, that's what we sort of bring in from the neuro associative conditioning. And the reason we do that is because you, you're starting to program your neurochemicals in your brain. And then that gets in, so you, you're sort of harnessing, you, you feel like you're just this oneness, if you, like your body, you, you. The deeper you go, you, you can get into really deep states where you feel like you're part of the ground.
Yeah.
So, you know, what's happening neurologically is you're starting to produce D M T that some people will search out with ayahuasca and.
Right, that's a, that's a di- tript-.
Triptamine, yeah.
Triptamine. And it's, they say it's in your, is it your pineal gland or something?
So we, we, we produce all the states. If you take an MDMA tablet.
Yeah.
All it's doing is unlocking the genes that we already have.
Right.
So we're triggering them. So what we now know is we can trigger them.
Right.
Without a tablet.
And there's that feeling of the, the oneness and, and stuff like that.
Yeah, so the deeper you go, it goes, so there's levels to it, right? Like, you know, I, I love jiu jitsu and jiu jitsu, there's sort of white belt, blue belt, purple belt, brown belt, black belt. And, you know, it takes ten years to get your black belt.
Hmm.
And what they say in jiu jitsu is when you get your black belt, you're now ready to learn jiu jitsu.
Hmm.
So you've spent ten years to get to this level and there are levels. Same with this, there's levels, the deeper you go into it, the further you get to this state of oneness.
Hmm.
Fascinating.
Well, last night when I did my, I, I did it in the nighttime. I've never done it in the night. I don't know if that's recommended or not, but, um.
I just had to sleep.
Gave me a great sleep.
Oh, sometimes, yeah, I hear mixed reports on that. Hey, like, um, for me, I'm, I'm, I get into a really creative state. So I have so many amazing ideas.
Yeah.
Stop me from sleeping, cause I'm like, oh my God, I'm so motivated, I gotta get up and.
Yeah.
And, and start writing or.
Right.
Um.
Well, for me, it was really relaxing.
Yeah, cool.
And, but I noticed that, I did that hyperventilation, I went into that kind of otherness state, right? And, and then I just felt a little shift like I was, uh, resisting fully, um, surrendering to that state and I, and I realized it and I was just like, I just did a little bit further of that surrender.
Yeah.
To that state and it was, it was such a, it was beautiful.
That's part of it is if you're a control freak, you, you're gonna come up against it, it's gonna show up and.
And we're all to.
We, we all wanna control some, cause it, you know, what's life about? That's a big question.
Oh, mate.
And what's my purpose? We get stuck on, there's actually a sixty-two year old man, very successful guy, rang me yesterday and he, he's just at a identity crisis. I don't know what my purpose is, you know, shouldn't I be giving back? You know, who says you should really? That, that's his question at the moment. He's sixty-two, very successful. We all go through it.
Hmm.
Um, the art of surrender, oh man, it's beautiful. If you learn to let go in the bite and let God let go, it, it, it builds faith, it builds trust, it builds like this sense of like, oh, I'm okay.
Well, yeah, and you're fully receiving what life is, because control is an illusion, isn't it?
Yes, control is an illusion.
And that's part of the suffering.
It's a human conditioning.
That's part of the suffering when you're suffering chronic diseases, that you feel completely out of control and that you, you, your, your life has been side swiped by illness.
Yeah.
And you're faced with that.
Identity, right?
That, that reality of I'm not in control now, my body, this, this disease is in control of my life and my future. But that's your opportunity to realize that control is an illusion, right? And if you can surrender to that moment, not go yay, I've got a disease, I wish everyone else had a disease, it's not what we're talking about. But surrendering to that is such a powerful, powerful.
Yeah, so we, 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 we work with people on three steps. Awareness is step one, right? If you don't know, you don't know. Some people don't even know they're in emotional pain, but they're in it.
Hmm.
Um, you know, why are so many men killing themselves? I think we have six men a day committing suicide. Because we, you know, it's, it's, I'll be the tough guy and have a cup of cement and I'll just roll up. That's. You're unaware to what this can do to you.
Yeah.
So awareness is step one. When you're there and you're like, shit, I don't feel so good, that's step one. Step two is acceptance. You have to accept what is and what will be and what can be, accept it. You accept the fact that you could lose, accept the fact that you can't win all the time, except, um, let it go, let go where you're at.
Except that you've got this health.
And that surrender, like, accept that, okay, I've got this pain. Self-improvement is the next step that most people don't get to that. It starts with, how can I? I is control. If I, if I'm like, I can't do this cause my body, I'm giving it to my body. It was, what can I do?
Hmm.
I start thinking strategically, well, I can.
Hmm.
Look at gut health, I can look at psychology, I can, and all of a sudden you go on this journey. And you test and measure it. This works, this works. I don't know how long you've been on this journey, but for some reason you rang me and we did this Wim Hof and you've said, oh shit, that's sort of taking me to another level.
Hmm.
Stay in that level, keep mastering, but there's still ways in which you can go.
Hmm.
For your journey. Same with me, we, we're on this life journey.
Better every day, right?
About every day. That's it.
All right, so.
Good segue.
So let's do, let's, let's run through one of these breathing exercises. And I'm not sure, depending on how it comes across audi- audi- audio wise, whether we'll leave it on the, the audio podcast or just put it up as a, as a YouTube, uh, video. So, and.
Okay, I'm gonna take you through this.
Yep. And this is something, is this sort of the something that where people can start at home?
Every day.
Okay.
You can start.
Okay.
Today. It's not like, oh, you haven't ran before, rock up to a marathon and just run without training. It's not one of those things, cause the beauty is that everyone that's listening, if you're listening, then you're breathing.
Yep.
You already know that you're doing it, you're, you, you're an expert. All we're gonna do is study to be con- it's called conscious breathing. We're just gonna be conscious about it.
And in a nutshell, what are we achieving? In a real nutshell?
If, you know, the greatest things you'll get just from doing this for ten minutes will be focus, clarity and presence.
Hmm. Okay.
So no mind, you won't be thinking, you'll just be.
And is there a biological benefit as well? Or is this, this is not?
Yeah.
Yep.
Well, biology, so that's, that's the thing, if you wanna, the biology's changing every minute and every second.
Right.
Um, based on what we, what we eat, what's around us, the sounds, the smells, the taste, the sight.
Yeah.
Um, our unconscious mind is, is designed for safety first. So most of the unconscious, meaning I'm unaware, is searching the room for, to make sure that I'm safe.
Okay.
And so it's always on edge.
Hmm.
Imagine walking down the street and you're, you're always looking out for the dude that's gonna stab you, well, you're gonna be on edge. That's what your unconscious mind is designed to do.
Mm hmm.
Um, so if that's the default setting, then you're gonna feel like you're always on edge.
Hmm.
Um, even if you tell yourself, no, I'm happy, I've got three really healthy kids and I've got a beautiful wife, why am I feeling miserable? Well, that, your unconscious program is.
Yeah.
Is, is, i- i- it's taking over ninety-five percent of your experience.
Hmm. Okay. All right.
Um, so what, what you'll get clarity, focus and presence. Um, you have people that, I don't have time. Well, ask yourself, how much time do you have? If you've got a minute, do a minute. If you can't give yourself ten minutes at the start of the day, you, you're kidding yourself.
Yep. Yeah, you are.
Like it's, um, that, that's responsibility.
Mm hmm.
For yourself.
Yep.
Be responsible, own it, own your, your illness, own it like it's yours. Um, don't attach to it like it's my body, but it's like, ah, own it in a way is like, oh, awesome. This, this is, this is my challenge.
Hmm.
This is my challenge to conquer and it's my training ground to get stronger and stronger and healthier and, and more empowered. And if I keep following that path, then, you know, as great Buddha said, it's not, it's not achieving happiness, it's living happily. It's not achieving great health, it's living healthily.
Hmm.
Like you, you don't wake up one day and go, wow.
I did it.
Did it. It's, it's every small moment, one percent every day.
Mm hmm.
Follow the path.
All right, awesome.
All right, we'll do a ten minute little breathing set. So first is i- i- if, uh, if we look at is how you sit, how you stand, everything's communicating back to your brain for this biology. So I want you to sit yourself in a really comfortable sort of strong position in the chair. So feet flat, straight spine, palms up. And we're gonna start with just breathing through the nose. And what I want you to focus on as we breathe through the nose is breathing deep into your belly first. So send your awareness to your belly button. As you breathe in, imagine someone pulling that belly button out like a balloon. Feel it, feel right up. And if it feels a bit uncomfortable at the beginning and you're like, oh, am I doing this right? Just let those thoughts come and go and attach to them. Someone gave you those thoughts and you're just breathing deep into your belly. Now I want you to send your awareness from your belly. Imagine it's like a wave and it sends into your chest, belly, chest, let it go. Focusing on that deep belly breath into the chest. Now your, your belly and your chest are like the balloon. So you've got a string on your belly button and then you've got a string on your sternum. And the belly button goes first, it's like a wave surging up to your chest. Now we're gonna get even deeper, through the nose, we're gonna breathe, imagine you can get it to your head, belly, chest, head. Let it go. And again, fully in, let it go. And that breath out, that's the one of relaxation. So I want you to focus on that, breathe in. As you breathe out, feel the focus, but feel your feet in the ground, feel your arms. Be aware of the weight of the chair. Let it go. Sitting tall and relaxed at the same time. So right now we're centering our nervous system. A really good breathing pattern is five seconds in, five seconds out. We call it water breathing or four seconds in, just make it consistent. And that's just gonna communicate to your nervous system that you relax. Now we're gonna move into some power breaths. I'm gonna put it on the clock, so sixty seconds. We're gonna breathe in through the mouth and nose, just get it in and let it go with a breath hold. Belly, chest, head. Think of power when you're breathing in. Feel powerful. We're training the muscles here. So we're gonna start in five, three, two, one, go. Belly, chest and let it go. Belly, chest, head, let it go. So bring awareness to the breath still. So you're feeling everything lift. Start with your feet. Voluntary breathing. We think about it, we feel it and we're heightening up these senses in our body. Let it go. To be calm, relaxed, focused and centered. Twenty more seconds and we're gonna do a breath hold. So now we're gonna start running into the. Really get it in. That's it. Let it go. And when you let it go, it's like effortless, no force, just feel. Feel like power breath, you're getting that oxygen in. In five seconds, we're gonna breathe out and hold. Five, four, three, two. One last breath in, let it go and relax. And now we sit still. Now be aware of your heartbeat. So it's about awareness. Presence is awareness. Consciousness is awareness. Be aware of your heartbeat. It beats on average a hundred thousand times a day. You don't have to ask it. It does its job. In your heart, you have neurons as well that produce the biology for your body. It's like a brain, has its own nerve system. Feel it beat and be aware of it. Just notice now what your body feels. If you've got any pain, if you're a bit awkward, see if you can just let it go. Like no force, just let it go. Imagine you're in a rip, just let go to the rip. Don't swim against it. When you feel the urge, take a deep breath in and we're gonna hold up the top, but only when you feel the urge. And cause I'm doing this on Ben, he might go for a minute thirty. So we've hit a minute. So it's indicating that his blood cells in his muscles have a good dense amount of oxygen. He's got enough oxygen where he can just sit in space. Take a deep breath in, hold up the top. Now just drop your shoulders, that was a minute twenty. Feel your feet in the ground, feel present, light little muscle squeeze, really light through your body from your face, just light, just light. And let it go in three, two, one. And then just take a breath in just naturally, whatever you feel, feel. Okay, we're gonna go into round two and off we go. Belly, chest, head, power breath. And notice what you feel now, you're breathing deeper. Have you opened your chest up more? You're feeling it. And we wanna sit to attention. Another little crack as well is if you flex the muscles like a smile, there's twenty-eight of them. It's gonna tell the brain that you're happy. And happy is dopamine. So we can force it by telling our body, hey, I am happy. Belly, chest, head, let it go. Belly, chest, head, let it go. Now just notice what you're feeling. What we're starting to feel at this stage generally is tingles going through your body. That's your metabolism starting to increase from the amount of oxygen that's being pushed through from cell to cell. Belly, chest, head, let it go. And again, surrender to it. The body knows what it's doing with these hormones, more than what we consciously do. Your body is incredibly powerful. Ten seconds. Excellent. Go for it, all the way through, feel that. Now sitting up, you're not gonna hold your breath for as long. Like five, four, three, two, one. Take a breath, breath in and let it go and hold. Now we're gonna increase this awareness and I want you to be aware of your heartbeat. Now feel your heart and be aware of the blood that is pumping around your head, around your neck, your shoulders, all the way down to the tips of your fingers. A system that you don't even have to ask to work, goes into your lungs. Beware of it going down to your digestive system, this rich oxygenated blood. Feel it going to your hips. Cleaning out all the inflammation. Down your knees, all the way down to your toes and now be aware of it all at once. Down your knees, all the way down to your toes, and now be aware of it all at once, that's kinesthetic awareness. Now tune into your hearing, another really good sense, our first sense we get in utero. What noises can you focus on and hear them as sounds, not just trying to work out what the sound is? How much noise can you hear? Now see if you can feel your blood going around your body and your hearing all at once. We're past one minute twenty, when you feel the urge, take a deep breath in. Presence. Strong. Health. Good breath hold, sorry, one forty. Okay, deep breath in, relax the shoulders, hold that up the top for fifteen seconds. Feel yourself just light, feel that blood running around and be super aware, the hearing. Everything's connecting into this one, so they're all working in unison, not against each other. Light flex on the muscles, smile, let it go in three, two, one, let it go. And feel that flood through your body.
Oh, wow.
So we've been going for six minutes, how do you feel right now? Like, we could keep going.
Feel beautiful. Just at rest. Tension in my chest is eased. Pain in my, around my abdomen and the the hips is kind of light. Like, it's kind of like a I've just, you know, taken a codeine or something like that and it's, you know, I'm starting to feel the effects of it.
Awesome, so right now, like, your body's more oxygen, we can keep going deeper and deeper into it, and you'll just, so right then you did one forty-five. Those indicating that you've just got so much oxygen in your muscles, the more we can get in there. The more those pain receptors are gonna shut off, and the more conscious you become, meaning you become the creator, you're conscious, you're aware. So then if you're aware of your system.
Hmm.
Then you can start rewriting the the neurological code, if you're the captain of the ship, you can tell where to go.
Mm-hmm.
And.
Now I've got much more focus on what you're saying, like we talked about before, this brain fog.
Brain fog.
That's so common for people with gut issues and anyone with any health.
Yeah, it's inflammation, anything inflammation rea- related will give you brain fog.
Right.
It shuts down the connections.
Yep, and so often when I'm in that state, which is almost all the time, you know, people are talking at you. You try, you're really hard to concentrate, you you're trying your best to concentrate, but you're kind of, sort of not taking in.
The memory shuts down.
What they're saying, and then you forget what's been said in the last half an hour, you know?
Hmm.
Um.
It's that, you know, Jim Quick, have you ever heard of him?
Yes, yeah, he's got the brain thing.
Yeah, 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 awesome, man, he he's a memory coach, um. Probably the best to do it as well, like, he works with Elon Musk, he works with high, high level people, he um. You know, he he talks about memory, like, everyone's got an amazing memory, but in order to have, recall, great memory. There's two things that you need, you need presence of mind, you need to be super present to take in what they're saying. And presence, like, you could be telling me something, but I could be in my own head, what's he saying, what's he saying, what's he saying, I'm not listening, I'm not present. Presence is no mind, so when I'm no mind, I'm actually obs- I'm taking it in, now if I wanna take that information and and remember it. Moving my body helps, sleep is the next superpower.
Hmm.
So getting into your five stages of sleep, or your four stages in your REM sleep.
Okay, how do people improve their sleep?
Oh, that's a totally, that's, um, i- if, yeah, short answer.
Yeah.
Having having a a ritual that slowly turns the uh the brain into melatonin. So like, dimming the lights, no phones, no stimulants, um, so no sugar.
Hmm.
No alcohol.
Hmm.
Before bed, having a nice little routine that's winding the body down. That's that's the short answer.
Beautiful.
But yeah, there's, you know, we've 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 all got different states, but basically what you need from biology is melatonin. And some people are like, oh, can I just take it as a tablet? Yes, you can take melatonin as a tablet, but if you don't use it, you lose it. And you become reliant on these tablets.
Hmm. So he's got.
So you produce melatonin.
Your body's got the goods, right?
Yeah, we don't need it.
Yeah.
We don't need to take a tablet.
Okay, so that was kind of, that was sort of like the Wim Hof method, would you call, or was that?
That was the Wim Hof, that was the start of the Wim Hof method, those breathing techniques, just to oxygenate you.
Yeah.
Uh, more oxygen, it's more focus, you'll feel a bit dizzy in it.
I feel a bit dizzy, but I'm so present, I'm so aware of what you're saying.
Yeah, the presence, um, as as, you know, the more oxygenated you are, you you start getting real dizzy and lightheaded.
Yeah.
That's why lying down's always better, ten minutes, we did it for seven, but I I know you've got a podcast coming, but
Hmm.
Ten minute ritual.
So you do another round, three rounds, good idea.
Ten minutes, um, getting the art of journalizing to train the mind. And focus on what you want, you know, what am I grateful for, pretty simple question, it's very powerful.
Hmm.
You know, what are the two things that if I got today, I'd feel like an absolute winner, just write them down and get them done, two things, you don't need to get. Some people are, I've got fifty things today to do today, how many did you get done? Or none?
Hmm.
It's cause you had fifty, start with one.
Yeah.
You've gotta get one first, then two, then three, then four, then five, then six.
Yeah.
Or delegate twenty of them.
Yeah.
You know, like, it's, um, but again, if you're not in the right state of mind, you can't think like that.
Hmm, yeah.
And uh so yeah, the Wim Hof method, I think is a really fast way.
Hmm.
We have a few breathing techniques that we, you know, everyone. The reason we give them away, you know, we just give them a name so people can kind of associate them, but water breathing, meaning you can do it all day. Like water, drink as much water as you possibly can, four seconds in, four seconds out, a- an equal amount of breathing. In your nose is always the best, it it signals that I'm I'm calm, I'm relaxed.
Except when you're doing, like, you wanna get in lots of oxygen, like the Wim Hof.
So if you want energy, like, so that can sometimes make you feel a bit tired, like, but if you want off, we call it coffee breathing.
Hmm.
Like a hit of coffee, get a hit of energy, is that power breathing. Stimulate your body, move, stand up.
I remember, I remember now I was super tired the next day, so the first time I tried this, which is what some people might experience.
Yeah, like, it's your body, well, so, yeah, wha- what what makes us tired is toxins.
Hmm.
So your body's detoxifying itself, and in order to get toxins out.
Hmm.
We either wee, poo, sweat, sometimes they feel like s- flu-like symptoms.
Hmm.
Um, sore throat, cold, sound like COVID, could be just getting detoxified. Um, and in that process of detoxifying, the body's requiring a fair bit of energy to do it.
Hmm.
So you can feel tired, but if you think, oh my god, I'm getting sick.
Hmm.
That's a different thought from going, oh my god, my body's detoxifying, I will allow that and rest, like, it's a different.
Yeah.
Uh, call to action, so how did you feel the second day, third day, and you just keep cycling it to condition your body to be detoxified?
Hmm.
If you've got a chronic illness and you've had it for twenty odd years, then your cells are conditioned for it.
Hmm.
Meaning it's the default setting, so anything outside of the default setting feels off for the body.
Hmm.
Like, for long term, like, going, why why am I feeling so good, like, I I I gotta, I'm doing these things that I haven't done. It's like, when I did mention the running part, if you get on a treadmill or go for a run, you haven't ran for twenty years. You go for a run, say K two, K three, K, whatever, you're gonna wake up the next day sore and tired.
Hmm.
Cause your body's replenishing all the stuff that it used in order to do it.
So it was a great practice.
Great practice, you keep turning up and doing that running, all of a sudden doesn't feel as sore.
Hmm.
But that's where bed every day, go from one K to two K to three K to five K to seven K to twenty K to fifty K.
Yep.
Don't start at fifty K.
Yep, now, lastly, that controlled hyperventilation method that we then went to from the Wim Hof method was the one that the trippy one, that was like the morphine one.
Mm-hmm.
Can we show just for the listeners to round things out, cause that that that's pretty cool.
Yeah.
That's really cool, and for the effect that it has on your buddy, on on your body, for the, just, I don't know, good vibes. Um, but also this sense of getting into that state of, like I said, kind of checking out and coming. It is almost like this perspective whole shift in my head. And it just grounded me when I came back in, really, like, it was such a cool experience and I and it has been ever since, I really enjoy it. And so why do you do it and when can you do it?
Uh, why you do it is to get in that state, is to
Yeah, yeah.
Is to kind of check out, it's like a reset button, but
Yeah.
You know, same reason why people do uh D M T or ayahuasca.
Hmm.
It it's, or magic psilocybin.
Hmm.
Is to um explore these states of consciousness.
Mm-hmm.
And the deeper you go, it's out of body.
Hmm.
Right, so we're spiritual beings having a human experience, if we're attached to our body and pain and stuff like that, then we can suffer. We're actually greater than that, and that's what this does, it gets you into a state of going, wow, I am looking at my life from a different angle.
Hmm, and I'm not in my own story and own ego.
It shuts it down, shuts your mind, it actually shuts your neocortex down, so that's your thinking, so you can't tell stories, you become present, you become no mind.
Wow.
And that's, it's a beautiful state to be, that's where therapy can begin, that's where uh changing the story coding we call it, and the identity happens in that moment, and then you can nerve cells that fire together, wire together, you can rewrite the coding, it's fat, it's real cool. And it doesn't take that long, that's the fascinating thing.
No, can we just do a run round of that show?
Okay, so it's, uh, similar breathing this time, yeah, you 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 might get dizzy, you'll be alright, cause you.
Yeah.
Yeah, you know, be be be, don't be doing this driving a car.
No.
Um, even walking around, you get dizzy, don't do this around water, um, because you feel.
We did though, you.
I was watching you though.
Yes, yeah.
So.
That's when the the heat, the inner heat keeps in.
This is, that's the best thing is that in the cold, you're turning off the stress system and you're becoming conditioned to stress in a comfortable way. So stress becomes healthy.
Yeah.
Rather than stress being unhealthy.
Yeah, and that's the other thing I didn't tell you, my, another P B, the three and a half minutes, but also I spent like twenty-five minutes in nine, in the nine degree pool, right?
That's fantastic, yeah.
Which, and I was like, I was almost sad to leave.
Yeah, it's very euphoric, so, and that's the thing is, you don't normally blackout. But you feel so euphoric, if you go underwater, you it's out of bodies, so you, it's so peaceful, the, some people. I don't know if anyone actually has, to be honest, so I don't know if anyone's drowned from it, but you could.
Hmm.
You, you know, freedivers do, actually, so people have, where you feel so euphoric, you feel like you can stay down there for a lot longer than you. You can, your your brain will want oxygen before the body and that's the problem, when you're underwater, is that, I mean, so, yeah, yeah, your brain won't want oxygen, but it will need oxygen.
Okay.
Cause it doesn't have the switch, and then you you go to sleep underwater.
Yeah, you don't want that.
And then, yeah, then you drown, um, so controlled hyperventilation, you you're breathing in same way, get it in. But this time you are breathing out as well, so it's I'm I'm exaggerating both in and out.
Hmm.
Focusing on the belly, pushing it out through my belly, I'm 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 operating my lymphatic system. And my adrenaline system, my adrenal glands, we'll do it for twenty breaths, then hold up the top, then you squeeze the back of your neck. Like you're flexing it, that's where an adrenal gland is, and your stomach, it's gonna pump paranephrine through your body, it's a state of bliss.
Okay.
Ready?
Beautiful, yeah.
Go twenty fast ones. One, two, and you gotta feel your body, it's like, so this is like a warrior breath, it's like, I'm getting myself into a state of gut, you know, you're fighting upstream, you're going for it, feel it, eleven, twelve. Thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen. In and hold, at the top, the back of the eyelids, squeeze the body and let it go in two, one, ah. And you'll be dizzy, and then slowly breathe in through your nose. And feel it, and then.
It's like I'm in water.
Yeah.
I'm like an embryo or something.
And the deeper you go into it, the, you know, the actual method of the breathing cycle takes forty-five minutes to do it perfectly. And you could probably stay there for longer and longer and longer and longer, um, but it's, um, it's very euphoric, it's very like, even your pupils change, they dilate and constrict. Um, but it's it's beautiful.
It's beautiful.
Yeah, and you feel love, you feel oxytocin, I've taken people where they, actually, I think Tim did hysterically start laughing and.
That was, that was me, I started to start laughing, I've done that since too, I was just like.
I remember taking, um, this is, this is a few years, this is when, oh, maybe five years ago. A friend, a client of ours had terminal cancer and amazing story, Kate Melvin. For for a podcast like this, she'd be great to talk to, burly girl as well, healed herself holistically, it was amazing story. But she had, you know, been, she had thirty people come and say, oh, can you help them with this breathing, so we we went, we went down, just give them something. And there was like thirty, they were all women really, there were thirty women, and on the beach. It was like this hysterical fit of laughter by the end of it, where it's uncontrollable.
Yeah.
But you're getting so many amazing hormones, uncontrollable fits of laughter of like thirty women, and there's like people walking up and down the beach, just like coming up to me after like, what the fuck was going, you guys are mad, like, what are you doing with these people? But it's just, it was a, it, we've got it on video, so it's funny to watch, just women just in in hysterics on the ground, rolling around like. Can't stop laughing.
Have you got it on online, on YouTube?
Um, no, I don't think we have it online, we video it, like, we don't do a lot of.
No.
We we work with brands that we have to sign N D As, so legally we can't market with them. So we don't really do much marketing, we we will, like, um, once we set up a bit of a a lower.
Hmm.
Um, sort of entry level for people, we'll definitely do it, but at the moment, we're sort of working, we're busy enough with what we're doing.
Yeah. Wow, mate, um, this is so on topic for where I'm taking the podcast.
Awesome.
This is, this is going into what's possible in your body, this is the knowledge and the wisdom and the intelligence of the body.
And it's way smarter than we give it credit.
And this is so accessible for people, and it's a way that they can start.
Hmm.
Change the way they frame, it's change the way they see and what's possible with their body, but also you know, change the way, change, start changing their mindset to go, what's what's possible? Like, if I can do this here and change my state of current presence. Uh, it's just that rolling of the the stone that that's able to then allow them to maybe, maybe I can go out and do some star jumps or
Hmm.
Whatever it is, maybe I can go and if something's stressing them out. Call call my mum because I wanted to have that conversation with her that I need to get off my chest, or, you know, just those making good decisions, right, and then I'm in a good state of health to be able to do that, and um it's just that thing, one of those things that can get people off the couch, if you like, in my, in my state and start.
It goes from maybe I can to I can.
Yeah.
That's the beauty of it, maybe I can get off the couch, oh my god, I'm off the ga- I am off the couch.
Yeah, and it strikes me too that you work with people at a high performance level, C E Os, you know, entrepreneurs. Athletes, um, heart surgeons, people like that, but I often see people living with chronic diseases. They're they're people that have got this immediate, it's almost, there's a similarity, when you're an athlete, you've got this challenge, right, to to be the best. When you're living with uh chronic pain or disease, you've got this challenge before you and you need to, you need to shift your mind.
Best.
To to be there and to turn up.
Yeah.
And to go, yep, I can do something about this.
Yeah, what can I do?
What can I do about this?
And all you can actually do is focus on how you think, how you move and what you feed your body.
Beautiful.
That's your control.
That's a great way to end it, thanks, David.
You're a legend. You're a champion.
Cheers, mate.